Okay, Jerry.
Say when, Dan. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 17th Village Board Meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bolling.
I'm here.
Redhauer.
Here.
Udrow.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Brenear.
Here.
And Staten is absent.
Thank you.
So this ought to be a quick meeting.
Yep. Next on the agenda, we have public appearances and we have with us tonight Craig Raddits from Fiduciary. Hi, Craig.
Hi, Jerry. Hi, everyone. So I spoke with Jerry briefly and I thought what I'd do is we were in front of the Plan Commission last week with four different items and I was, I'll quickly run through as I know Trustee Carpenter will take it from there. But we came back. The first two items, we've been wanting to, on the southern end of Bergamot, Bergamot Boulevard is all of our entrance monuments that were originally put in by the original developer back when. And again, we've made improvements over the years, other gate areas and so forth. But what we want to do is on the northern end of the Bergamot Boulevard, we want to have a monument sign there and for the Bergamot and for the Bergamot Town Home. So the first two issues that were both approved unanimously are just our sign. That'll be a permanent sign. It's gonna go up. It's roughly about a $40,000 sign to bring that identity to the northern end of the development. And then the second issue is, so there's the conditional use on that and the second issue is the CSM that's related to that because by the new sign ordinance, it needed to be on a separate CSM. So we worked with Jeff and everyone on that and again unanimous approvals on both those. And then the second is the final plat for the, for the...
You can't remember the name either?
I can't remember the name. I don't know why we changed it, you know, I mean...
Reserve is easier.
Oh, it was easier, Mike, wasn't it? The Legend Hills at Bergamot. And again, if you see in the packet, the plat itself, there's 26 single-family lots that are being platted per the SR6 with an overlay. And basically, I believe we were in front of the council probably about six months ago explaining that we took this piece, which was originally a PUD when we purchased the property for a hundred and some multifamily units and we found that we want to create a single-family home environment particularly towards mature adults looking for anywhere from a 1,500 square foot ranch, single-family, all the way up to someone could probably built out a basement with bedrooms and things like that. So really targeting the empty nester that we think is a very, very strong market. So 26 lots there, so that is the third. And then last is our SIP, our Specific Implementation Plan, for how we're gonna go about designing and the standards for this area. At the end of the Plan Commission, I said, you know, a lot of times we go through a lot of iterations to get to the end, but I really think we've ended with a great plan here. The SIP has a bungalow craftsman style of architecture. Our people spent a lot of time designing the architecture and making sure that the standards were clear because there'll be individual builders that will be building there. And we have very good and strong landscaping guidelines that especially lean towards, there's a lot of specimen trees on this parcel and we're trying to maintain as many as possible. Originally, it would have all been clear cut for multifamilies. So that is what is going to be the association of 26 single-family lots. And so that's what we are excited to move forward on and look for your approval this evening.
Thank you, Craig.
Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I had one question about the monument sign. I noticed that the proposed lighting wasn't consistent with the lighting ordinance. Was that addressed?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution that you have or the conditional use permit says that only ambient lighting is permitted.
Any further questions?
Is the design of the sign, as it appears in the packet, is that the final design or is that a suggestion that the Planning Commission approved that?
No, that is the final design that the Plan Commission approved, correct.
They'll still submit a signed permit application?
Yes. Correct. Tomorrow.
That'll just be a...
Anyone else? All, if not, thank you, Craig. Always good to have you here.
Appreciate it.
And with that, we'll move into the motions from the October 6th Planning Meeting and I'll turn the meeting over to Trustee Carpenter, who's the board representative on planning.
All right, so the first item is from our October 6th Planning Commission meeting. This is a discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding Fiduciary's conditional use permit request for a permanent plat sign at the southwest corner of Highway CC and Bergamot Boulevard. And so I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit and the agreement in our packet.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item two is discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding Fiduciary's Certified Survey Map Request for Permanent Plat Sign at the Southwest Corner of Highway CC and Bergamot Boulevard. This motion was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, so my motion is to approve Fiduciary's Certified Survey Map Request for Permanent Plat Sign at the Southwest Corner of Highway CC and Bergamot Boulevard.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number three is discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding adoption of Resolution Number 16-30, approving the final plat for the Legend Hills at Bergamot, formerly known as the Reserve. This was also approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, so it would be my motion that we adopt Resolution Number 16-30, approving final plat for Legend Hills at Bergamot, formerly known as the Reserve, contingent on name of Legend Hills at Bergamot being used and meeting the Village Planner's recommendations in the September 8th, 2016 memo.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And this is the last one regarding Fiduciary. This is a discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding approving the Specific Implementation Plan for the Legend Hills at Bergamot Phase 1. This was also unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, so my motion would be that we approve specific implementation plan for Legend Hills at Bergamot and meeting the Village Planner's recommendations for Phase 1 as stated in the October 3rd, 2016 memo.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to number five. This one is discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding approving specific implementation plan for the Oregon Manor Campus Project 336 and 354 North Main Street and 333 and 337 Soden Drive. Should be noted that the Plan Commission unanimously recommended this to the Village Board, so I'll make a motion for discussion if there is any. My motion is that we approve the specific implementation plan for the Oregon Manor Campus Project 336 and 354 North Main Street and 333 and 337 Soden Drive, contingent on meeting Village Planner's recommendation from September 29th, 2016 memo.
Second.
Is there anybody here that wants to talk about that? Any questions from the board?
The easement to the parking lot, has that been secured or is it still...
Yes, actually, I can comment on that. We received a letter from the owner of the land, Tom, and he confirmed that he actually owns that land across the street and, which I guess there was a feeling that for a while that that was actually land he was leasing or something like that, but he owns that parcel. And so it's not a, and it's connected, it's under the SIP, it's connected with the parking requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, discussion and possible recommendation to the Village Board regarding approval of CSM for Lot 144, Third Edition to Mary Hill Edition on Thompson Drive. This is a CSM to create a two-lot CSM, zero-lot line splitting a proposed duplex on the site. So this was unanimously recommended to the Village Board by the Planning Commission, so my motion is that we approve the CSM for Lot 144, Third Edition to Mary Hill Edition on Thompson Drive. This is a CSM to create a two-lot CSM, zero-lot line splitting a proposed duplex on the site, contingent of meeting the Village Engineers' recommendations in September 16th, 2016 memo.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
I'll move on to item B now. It's a discussion with Brett Heft and possible action regarding a property tax issue for 978 Park Street. Is Brett here?
No, he's not here.
He's not here.
Got to put that on hold.
Put that on hold. Item C, discussion with Brett Reiman, which is the Spanree Property Group, overview of a three-story apartment project on Jefferson Street and request for Village to share in the traffic study expense. Got to recommend a motion there. Why don't we get that on the table? It's to approve and accept the proposal from Strand Engineering to conduct traffic study with the Village, providing TIF number three assistance in the amount of $4,500. Darlene, you want to make that motion, please?
Jerry, can I say, because you'll see a revised one, a study in your proposal in your packet, we're offering, staff is proposing $5,000 for the study.
I'll amend my motion to say $5,000 instead of $4,500. Is it okay with you, Darlene?
It's fine with me.
Would you make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Could I please have a second?
Second.
Are there any, is there any discussion on that item?
Jerry, you want to have the presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'm just curious why you asked Darlene to make the motion?
She's been too quiet.
You want to vote on that before you actually, you want to, it's up to you.
No, let's just have the presentation as part of the discussion, please.
Well, getting started. My name is Brett Reiman, partner with Spanree Property Group. Thanks for your time today. I don't think, I've only met a couple people in front of me, but again, I'm a partner in Spanree Property Group. Just, I'll do a little history on it, on who we are, and then we'll get into what we're thinking for the site. So Spanree Property Group is a local multifamily development and management company. My partner and I, Brian Spanos, started the company, well, we've been together as partners for about 18 years in real estate. And over time, created a management company to manage our properties because we didn't want someone else to manage them, we just felt the best way to manage our properties is to self-manage it. So we created the management company and most of our stuff, all of our properties are self-managed by us and then we do a little bit of third-party management, but most of the properties that we manage are all owned by Brian and myself. We're from McFarland, so Oregon is pretty close to us. We have some duplexes here in town that have done really well. We've owned them for about five years or so and we've just really liked the community. So we met with staff a little over a year ago, Michael and his group, just to see if there's any infill projects in Oregon that, for a multifamily, if there's any opportunities there. And Michael and his group gave us three different properties that might work for an infill multifamily project, this being one of them that we'll talk about today, two other ones that we talked to, just didn't work out, but this was our favorite one just because its proximity to downtown and the walkability to all the restaurants and retail, we just thought it was a really, really neat site. So we were happy to close on the property at the end of August and to start the process. So again, I just wanted to do a quick overview on that and if there's not any questions for me, I'll pass it over to our architect to talk about what we're thinking about doing.
My name's Brian Stoddard. I'm the project architect. I'm with Canothia and Bruce Architects out in Middleton. I'd like to give you a quick overview of the project. As most of you are aware of the location, it's at the intersection of Jefferson and Main here. The bank is across the street, multiple commercial uses here, the clinic is back here and there's some multifamily located across the railroad tracks. The basic building is three stories with underground parking. We've got 63 units, we've got 60 underground parking stalls, so that makes our surface parking requirement 17 stalls, if my calculations are correct. So what we're also doing here is the Village owns this piece here, that parking lot behind these commercial uses. What we've done with direction from staff is to rework this entire area here, both the Village property and on our site here, to create some efficiencies in the parking layout to hopefully increase the number of parking stalls available for both uses.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the intent is to do some cross-parking access agreements so that it can be shared parking. So it'll be a boost for the commercial users too. I understand there's a high demand for parking back here at times, so there's some good crossover opportunities. For our project, with the underground parking and the additional surface stalls, we need 17 additional surface stalls to meet our requirement. That leaves a net gain for the overall parking of nine or 10 stalls. So I think it's going to work out well for everyone involved here. So right now, we're showing one access point off of Jefferson onto the site. There are multiple islands here to help circulation. We're still maintaining the loading zone across the back of the commercial property and so it should function for the commercial uses pretty much as it does now. We're also planning for a potential connection with UW Clinic property here to the south. Right now, there's some general interest in it. We haven't gone too far down that road, but just because of the circulation sort of complexities of getting in their site and out of their site because of one-way street out here on Main Street, so we're hoping in the future that could benefit their circulation also. So here's a blow-up, oh, sorry, a blow-up of the site. We've got 63 units for site amenities. We've got a community room located back here, an exercise room, and there's a leasing office onsite. There's a large outdoor patio area back here. This is the railroad tracks. So there's about an eight-to-10-foot berm here where the tracks set up high as they cross Jefferson. So what we've got here, we're taking advantage of, is a nice little sort of pocket back tucked in behind the building to use as a large patio area. And that's the basics. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Assuming this is approved, what's your construction timetable?
We're looking at a spring start and probably 10 to 11 months construction period.
Okay, and how many bedroom units are they?
There's a mix of unit types. We've got 16 studios, two, what we're calling micro-one bedrooms, they're small one bedrooms. We've got 29 one-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units that also have a den in them for a total of 63. So there's a pretty good unit mix, but we're sort of targeting to the smaller units with the studios and the one bedrooms because we just think that's where the market is right now.
Have you set pricing yet for the units?
Right.
Conceptually, we have between anywhere from $825 for the studios to around $1,295 for the two bedrooms.
Thanks, I'm just trying to get an idea of what demographic you're going after.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, young professionals, empty nesters is what we're targeting.
Great. So when will you start raising the structures that are there now?
We, so there's leases on the current property. I think the last lease is up at the end of February, so we would like to start raising those in March.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions from anyone else? Jeanie?
I would just make a comment that I really like the way that you have redone the whole property, including the Village parking lot property, because I think that's, that looks really nice, it's going to increase in parking. And I'm sure this will go back to the Planning Commission, right? Those guys have a lot more expertise than I do about parking lots, but conceptually, it looks really good and I appreciate you working with staff to make that happen.
Thank you.
So your schedule is you want to go to the November Planning Commission meeting for the GDP for this. Are you shooting for November?
Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, we'll be submitting later, we'll be submitting later this week for the November Plan Commission.
And then you're going to come to the board to talk about TIF assistance at some point?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any retail going in?
No.
Any further questions or comments?
Just comment on the...
Go ahead, Jeff.
We can comment on the geo, or the traffic study.
I was just going to suggest that be covered, yeah.
Yeah. This area here is kind of, this is a great opportunity. The staff sees this as a great opportunity to kind of fix some ills in the area. And a couple of those ills are the fact that we have so many access points along Jefferson Street. We also have kind of poor circulation in the parking lot and we have, we're obviously always, we always can need more parking in the downtown and so we see this as an opportunity to really fill three of those things, or those three things very well. And I would echo Jeanie's comments in that I think this is a very nice layout and I think we all kind of, meant we saw it, we were happy with it and let them know about that. But there still is, you know, there's going to be questions as far as access, as far as how this will affect the intersection at Janesville and Main Street where it turns into Jefferson, or Jefferson and Main Street where it turns into Janesville there. And so all along, if you remember, when we were looking at this with the previous developer, there was concern over traffic impacts to this area. So it's kind of been always on the back burner as a traffic study would be something that the Village would require of a developer along this parcel. We've worked with Spanree Group here in kind of outlining a possible sharing in the cost of that traffic study for a couple reasons. We think it brings benefit for the downtown property owners. We also want to look at how it affects our traffic patterns. We also want to look at how it would affect and possibly improve things with punching through to the medical clinic. And then lastly, we have an alleyway that comes out from Quick Trip, that's a single-lane alleyway back over there off, onto Jefferson Street, kind of a problem. In fact, I was witness to a large semi truck that became high-centered there about two weeks ago, if anyone was out there at the time, trying to pull out of this alley. So what we're wanting to do is actually partner with them on this traffic study and that's what the $5,000 of TIF assistance would be towards that. And so we see a mutual benefit. They get the traffic study and get done, they're going to pay for the remaining balance of that above $5,000. And then we would also get the benefit of it from having the study done, looking at it, how it affects and possible modifications to that alleyway as well as the alleyway on Main Street.
So, I don't want to get too far out over my skis, but picturing where the outlet is and picturing where the stoplight is and thinking about rush hour and a lot of people from the apartment building trying to get out onto Jefferson, my mind naturally goes to so many times that I've seen traffic at that stoplight backed up past the entryway into the parking lot. So I start to think about this snake of cars in the parking lot, trying to find their way onto Jefferson while the red light there has got cars backed up past the entrance to the parking lot.
Correct.
What proposals can you envision, ways to configure that intersection that would address that?
That's what this study looks at. This study's going to look at turning movements, it's going to actually look at, you know, peak hour, peak day, traffic counts and turning movements. They actually have, the engineers will come out and they'll actually do, they have these little computers that they hold and it marks who's turning where and how many cars back up at the intersection during a red light occurrence. It'll also kind of, then they'll make that with the projected traffic of 63 units back there and start looking at how that affects the peak traffic patterns. And then they do that in a model and it's kind of cool if you ever see if the model shows kind of how it all runs. It's able, it gives us the ability to kind of look and see if there's going to be a problem, to what extent there would be a problem and possible ways that we could alleviate that problem. And I think one of those is when you have alternate ways out of a place, that can help, you know, if there's a secondary exit or entrance off of, towards the clinic, that can help that as well. But that's what this study would look at.
So one thing that you can envision is that the clinic says, okay, we'll let cars drive through our parking lot and exit onto South Park Street.
South Main Street.
South Main Street. Can you think of anything, any other things that you've seen? I don't mean to stretch it too far, but...
No, but I think, we want to stress the benefit to the clinic for that as well. I think there's a direct benefit to the clinic in access, not only of their cars onto their property, but cars from their property because right now, they really have a one-way-in, one-way-out type of way into the clinic right now and there's really no other avenue for making that change.
Is the right-of-way width fixed? Is there a way to expand that or not?
We really don't have room. There's, I mean, you, you're held to what we have at the bridge and that's pretty much max where it is unless we want to, and I don't want to throw this out, replace the bridge, which, you know, is only a few years old and we don't want to do that. But I think there's, I think there's adequate space in what we have even to possibly look at a turn lane, but that's one of the things that will kind of flesh itself out as, you know, as this traffic study is, you know, developed and prepared.
How much flexibility do you have with regards to the site plan you're proposing to move that building around or is that the only place that building fits?
We're locked in there pretty tight. We originally had started with an L-shaped building here, but in order to get this to work better, we pulled this wing back to free up this part of the site to actually help with the circulation. But our building is in there pretty tight on the site right now.
So my only concern, and I'm just trying to get comfortable with it, is we spent $5,000, $6,000 on something that ultimately tells us it isn't going to work. And that's a, that's a pretty expensive rabbit hunt.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say about this is, you know, we've evaluated more than one project with this location. This is a critical location for redevelopment downtown and it's not going away. So we need to get our hands around what the issues are, what the options are for addressing those issues. And this is kind of a good time to do that. And certainly, I think everyone hope can find a way to address any of the, any of the problems that are identified in a way that will allow this project to move forward, but we don't...
You would not be wasting money, you would not be wasting money on this kind of product, on this kind of study because regardless of what goes in there, it's going to generate traffic. And that has to, you know, so let's say a development, I mean, we want this to succeed. I think this is a nice-looking layout, at least what they have. I can't comment on the need for apartments and all that type of stuff, but from a civil engineering standpoint, it looks like a very good fit for the, for the use of the space and the kind of the awkward-shaped parcels. But regardless of what goes in there, it's going to, whatever is developed in there is going to generate traffic. And this study is taking what we have in the traffic on the road as well as what would be proposed. I think it's going to, it's going to cause a value to us because we, right now, are evaluating what we need to do with that alleyway out of Quick Trip. And so that's going to, it's going to bring value added to the Village no matter what happens with this development or anything else.
And if it does point out, you know, some significant problems at that intersection, then whether it's this, these folks or anybody else who's trying to address this site, then they'll have... then they'll have the benefit of the study to, to be able to say, okay, here, here's the problem we need to solve. And we just haven't been able to really, because it hasn't been studied, we haven't been able to speak with clarity about exactly what the constraints are. And, you know, is that driveway location acceptable? We just don't know.
We've been hoping for a development on this site for as long as I can remember. And I think this would be a logical step forward right now. And I would point out, too, that the total cost of the study is $10,150. Developers are going to pay for half of it.
It's actually $11,180.
New ones in your packet, the, the revised.
We asked them to include, include an analysis that would incorporate the clinic option. So I think that's listed as additional, it is additional services.
My point is, we're only paying for half of it, though.
Less of it, yes.
Any further discussion on that item? Okay. Back to the motion. I have a motion on the table to approve and accept a proposal from Strand Engineering to conduct a traffic study with the Villages, providing TIF number three assistance in the amount of five, what was that again?
Five thousand.
$5,000. Do I have a second, please?
You have a jury.
Oh, we have, so we already have that motion on the table?
Yep.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thanks.
I'll be in touch with you guys as we get everything set for that. And they'll probably want to talk to you. It's going to be interesting, because we'll sign.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dan Donahue, and a discussion and possible action approving a change to the premise description for Chocolate Caper in their alcohol beverage license. Now, Dan, you were here last week. Would you please, for those of us that may not have the great memory, would you please repeat what you're hoping to do here?
Sure. We're, when we submitted our original premise description, it said, basically, see the attached map. And the attached map of our, where we're going to store the alcohol. And now that we have gotten, received some alcohol in, and we're starting to sell some bottles of wine, we discovered that we didn't plan the best places to store the alcohol. On the original map, it had primary storage in the back room, if you're looking at the packet. So the farthest, the highest up room on there, what it was primary storage, with secondary storage in the hallway to the left of the two rooms. And what we'd like to do is amend that to make the, what was primary storage, secondary storage, and to make the office, which is not labeled as anything, our primary storage area. And the reason for that is, we have a couple. One, it's one of the few places we have space. So that's definitely a big factor. It's also the only room that we can lock. We have an electronic lock on that office, and so we can lock up the alcohol whenever myself or Elizabeth or someone, a manager, isn't going to be there, or we have any concerns, anything like that. And it's much, much closer to the sales area. We are, at this time at least, we're only putting out display bottles of wine, and we're getting the bottle of wine for the person when they purchase it, to reduce risks of theft and anybody getting way underage, anything like that. And it makes it much, much easier for us to get, get the bottle for them without having to walk all the way to the back of the store, around, find the box, find the bottle, and do all that. So it's a relatively minor change. That was probably way more explanation than it needed. But I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
That's quite all right. So the new locations are the primary and secondary storages as designated on this map?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I'd be interested to know if Chief Yule had any concerns. Typically, he's the one that looks at.
I didn't, I didn't send it to him, but I could definitely do that.
We could make a motion contingent on his approval, if that would be okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I can't see anything wrong with it, but.
No, I can't either. But that's, you bring up a good point, Joe.
Yeah, and I definitely want to know, I mean, if he sees, oh, there's this issue that I would never think of. Definitely want to know about that.
Okay, so I'm going to refer to those storagers as the primary and secondary storagers on the provided map. So could I please have a motion to change the premise description for Chocolate Caper alcohol beverage, beverages to the primary and secondary storage areas as detailed on the map provided tonight? Could I please have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion or questions?
Put anything in the motion.
And I'd like to make, yes, I'd like to, I'll add the contingency that Chief Yule should approve that before it's official.
How does Doug feel about that?
That's fine with me, Joe.
The amendment is, the amendment is acceptable.
Okay with the site plan?
Yes, it's okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I'll give this map to staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. How's the initial response been for that?
Slow, but we're starting off very slow. We don't want to create a rush for things. So we are being very slow in how we advertise. And so bottles are moving, but we're slowly wrapping up.
Good to know. Thank you for being here. Next up, we have a discussion with the Village Attorney and possible recommendation regarding agreements for Police Department Records Management System.
So the background on this is, as I understand it, is that the Police Department has been using the City of Madison's system for record management. And it is, the Police Department would like to move away from that arrangement towards a contract with this Spillman Technologies, which, it's a little bit complicated, because we're having to accommodate or, or work kind of under a, an umbrella agreement that Spillman has with Dane County. And so we're kind of a sub-agreement, as I would characterize it. And our office has reviewed the Spillman agreement and is comfortable with it. There still will be a need to finalize an agreement with Dane County. The Police Department will need agreements with both Spillman and Dane County, as I understand it, to really be able to move forward with this. And so we're comfortable with the Spillman agreement. Chief Yule is working with Dane County on the Dane County agreement. And apparently, he's fairly confident that he's going to be successful in getting that done. And so I expect that Dane County agreement would come before you, when he's ready.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
I know the chief had a previous commitment tonight, but does someone here, can they speak to what the new records management system will accomplish that the old one would not?
I, I know, and I'm looking at the chief's PowerPoint that he handed out a couple of months ago. And I think one of the things that he likes is that if we're going to have an agency that backs the Police Department up the most, it's going to be the county. And we're going to have a lot better communication through this system, you know, than with the City of Madison. And I, I cannot, I can't comment on the issues that the departments had or having with the City of Madison IT Department regarding their current system. You know, it's something that Brian could. But I know that Brian has, has some frustration with that. And he's looking more confident or comfortable that those issues will hopefully go away when this gets switched over to the county.
Didn't Brian make a comment in that PowerPoint about the savings over time by switching to Spillman?
Yeah, I mean, there's an initial, there's an initial outlay of 129,000. And, and there, there may be some savings going forward, but I, yeah, let me, let me see here. 129,000 for the Spillman. And, yeah, there's, I think there's, I think there's less money for the ongoing maintenance of it, Jeff. I think you're right. I believe you're right, yeah. The county is waiving IT setup fees for personnel hours, saving $2,500 in costs for that, yeah.
My general impression of why Chief Yule wanted to move from the Madison Records Management System to this system is service-related. My sense is that he has, the department's had some frustrations in terms of the service they've been able to receive with the current system, and they, they believe they'll get better service with this. So I can't be much more specific about it, but that's my general impression.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve integrated public safety software purchase agreement with Spillman Technologies for Records Management System in the amount of 129,336 dollars.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Does the Villages then paper this? And do we have that in our budget to pay for?
It's, it's in 414. We'll, we'll have to borrow for that as part of our 2017 borrowing that we're going to do next year. I don't know if you noticed, it's a kind of a fine, we made them change the first payment during, to June 1st. Oh, page, some page.
I see that June 2.
It's on page five.
Yeah, right. And then it's second payment is in January.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so it would be part of our borrowing that we do next year.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on the site? Doug?
There's no way to separate out what the cost of record-keeping and management are for the current system. Is there a comparison possible, or is that not really relevant to this?
It starts with, we're paying the City of Madison. I don't know if he included that, Doug, in his PowerPoint. I don't think he.
Wouldn't that, would that be in his budget?
I don't, he didn't, it was not in his PowerPoint. I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to ask him for that.
Okay. I'd be interested to know, I don't want to.
Sure.
Right. Are we comfortable enough acting on this tonight, or should we wait till the chief is back? We can answer our questions. It is $129,000.
Find out when you call the motion.
So, can I, sorry. So Doug, you're asking the annual maintenance for, if we stay with the City of Madison versus the county, that's what you want, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
How soon does he have to purchase this agreement?
Well, I mean, I think, I think he wanted to get this signed and then get rolling on the, on the Dane County agreement. We're having a meeting, oh, I'm going to ask the board later on, for, ask for a special meeting next Monday for a couple of things.
I think he has a deadline on giving notice to the city, is the issue.
Yeah.
And that we're bumping up against that pretty good.
That's true.
But I don't know what that deadline is. It's my recollection from previous meeting.
Yeah. Well, his, what he wanted to do, that was in his initial PowerPoint, never worked out. That was, that was not, that was not possible.
Okay, what?
He wanted to actually go on and, and provide service by January 1st, 2017. He was trying to save, I think, oh, Jeff, maybe that's where you're getting, he was, he was going to try to save $22,000 in cutting off the City of Madison and going with Spillman at the beginning of the year. That, that wasn't possible. So that, that's where the real savings was going to happen.
So is time a factor here?
I think if you, if you wanted to wait an extra week, I don't think it's going to matter. But it's up to the board.
How does the board feel about that?
I think it'd be information worth, worth knowing.
So I think from a procedural perspective, I, I don't like making motions and then rescinding motions. I just don't think procedurally, that's the right way for the board to conduct business.
The, the proper motion would be to table till the next meeting?
Right. So what we would do is call the motion?
Oh, you table the motion. The motion is to approve the agreement, so that's the main motion. So it would be procedurally allowable, if the board wanted to, for someone to make a motion to table the main motion until your next meeting.
And who makes that motion?
Anyone.
I, I'll make a motion to table till next meeting.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Now that has priority. That's the motion before you now.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is tabled until our next meeting.
So what other information would you want from, from Brian so that he, he can be ready for the meeting? I, I have the annual maintenance comparison between Madison and Dane County.
Darlene, did you have a question earlier? I don't recall.
No, I just, I wonder how we were going to pay for it. So he told me that.
Well, and my question would be, just so you know, is, don't we need that agreement with Dane County solidified before we sign this and send it to Spillman? Maybe that's part of his plan, but that would be my question.
Okay, I'll ask him.
As long as time isn't a problem, I, I think this is the wisest thing to do with this right now.
I've had one of my colleagues actually working on this, because he has a better handle on this kind of contract than I do. So I'm not on the inside of this project. So there may be a good answer to that question about the Dane County. I just don't know.
I'll ask him.
Any further, anything further on this? Okay, we'll move on to item F. Discussion with the Village Attorney and possible action regarding approval of amendment to refuse and recycling collection services contract terminating December 31st, 2022 with Pelletary Waste Systems, Inc. And before us, we have a motion to approve the refuse and recycling collection services contract terminating December 31st, 2022 with Pelletary Waste Systems. Would someone please make that motion?
Well, I'll make it for discussion.
Do I have a second for discussion?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Darlene.
Didn't we already have this conversation?
You, you, you voted to proceed with it, but we also have, have to approve the amendment to the contract. You, you didn't have the amendment to the contract in front of you at that, at that meeting, Jeff.
Okay.
And Pelletary, I got a call from Pelletary, and the person who wanted to be here tonight wasn't feeling good. So, but they do, after, if the board votes for it, they want me to express thank you to the board. They're looking forward to continuing to, working with the Village on it.
Who would like to review, give the board a review of the changes?
I can hit the highlights for you. So first, this is a five-year, an additional five years beyond the current agreement.
Yes.
Second, Pelletary in their proposed rates, as I understand it, the rates for 2017 under this agreement would actually be lower than the rates for 2017 under your current contract. So they've done that as, I suppose, an enticement.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the other thing that Pelletary asked us to do is, in the current agreement, when, when we negotiated the current agreement with Pelletary, we were making a switch to them. They were going to be a new provider. They were somewhat new in the industry. We were moving towards, what do you call it, the automatic, automated cart system and so on. And because of, I think, uncertainty about how well it was going to go, we required them to provide a letter of credit to the Village in the event we needed to, to solve a problem. And they've asked that we release that, so that they can save the money on, that they're currently spending on keeping that letter of credit in place. And I think we even had a discussion about this at an earlier board meeting, where staff's recommendation was that we go ahead and release that. We don't see a need for it. So that's, that's the other piece of this amendment. Otherwise, this agreement essentially continues the agreement you've already got in place with Pelletary.
Thank you. Any further comments on this? I know I, for one, I've been around for a while, and I remember when we, boy, I remember when we used our own containers.
Stickers.
Stickers, and, and we've gone through a lot of changes, but this is, I think, of all the ways the, we've done collection of refuse and recycling, this is far and away the best system we've ever had.
I agree.
I, I've even watched the gentlemen in the trucks, when they, when they've got garbage piled outside bins, I've seen them stop the truck and get out and throw it in manually. So I think they go above and beyond. But anyway, any other comments before we proceed? Did we have a motion?
We do. Yep.
And a second?
Mm-hmm.
I started talking and forgot. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The contract has been renewed for an additional five years through 2022.
Actually, I think 2022.
Didn't I say 2022?
I heard 2017. I heard 2017, but my hearing's going, so. Between the two of us, we're a good pair.
Well, now we got it.
I got your memory, if you can take care of my hearing.
He said five years, so that would be 22.
And Darlene's got the math.
Okay. Between, that's why we have so many people on the board.
Yeah, we all have a specialty.
Yeah.
And a disability.
And a disability. Thanks, Doug. You need to speak into the microphone when you say that, Doug.
Okay, let's move, let's move on to review of building impact connection fees. Building permits, connection fees.
We skipped over, number four, Jerry. You have to pay the bills.
I do have to pay the bills.
And those are in your, in your plastic folder. We actually had a little promotor copier machine on, on Friday, so we can get things copied at the end of the day.
You still wouldn't let me get away with not paying the bills.
I enjoy your questions, Jerry.
See ya.
Well, actually, these were pretty cut and dried tonight, I thought. I don't know. We'll see what the rest of the, see Matt. We'll see what the rest of the board thinks. Anybody have a question on tonight's bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second then.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment on the voucher list tonight? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
A roll call, yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Redhauer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries. The bills are paid, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Move on to item five, which is community input. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including on items not listed on the board event agenda. Unless Dan and Judy have something to say. Dan, come on up, please.
I'm trying to be really quick. I'm Dan Donahue, 248 Purview Street in Oregon. Just two things I heard tonight that, of course, the new project on Jefferson Street is behind my store and the new Oregon Manor project is two houses up from me. So those, both of them, and I just wanted to make comments that I hope are just kept in consideration while those are going on. The two of those are for Oregon Manor, just during construction, how traffic and construction vehicles are gonna be managed, given Soden is the doorway to both my house and Purview. And I think more importantly, Purview, an elementary school there. So making sure that as that, I mean, I fully support both these projects, but as they're doing that, that Soden Drive doesn't get shut down. Then on the, the one that concerned me a bit more was on the Jefferson Street project when they said there was only one access point to the parking. Even the current parking right now is two access points and that often is important because one gets blocked off by flow of traffic or by something going on and you have to use the other one to be able to get out of the lot. So just, and then what happens with the current village parking lot while construction is going on and where the various things like current garbage and recycling are relocated to. So making sure all those are factored into that because those all affect us a lot. So I would recommend really more than one access point for that lot. It sounds like that's what you guys were talking about with the, with UW Health and the alley and everything there, so that's all.
Thank you, Dan.
I wanted to be really quick, just wanted to bring it up.
No, glad you did. Thanks for your input.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, proclamations and announcements. Are there any board comments tonight?
Well, I wanted to thank Judy for this, for this really nice Chamber ad. I, I found this in my mailbox, Madison Essentials Magazine, a really nice full-page ad celebrating Oregon and what it offers the community. So thank you, Judy.
Any other board comments? Move on to staff comments. Who would like to address early voting information?
I can do that.
Thanks, Candy. Go ahead.
So we are off, still offering in-person absentee voting in the clerk's office. We're quite busy with that. People are registering. The deadline for open, or registration by mail is October 19th, which is this Wednesday, but we will continue till October 28th, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. for in-person absentee voting. And then that last week before the election, so October 31st through November 4th, we're gonna be open until 5:30 to accommodate those people. So, and bring your photo ID. So that's about it for me.
Thank you. Item two. Mike, you wanna talk about the special board meeting?
Yep. I was wondering if the board could meet next Monday night at 5:00 to pay bills again because it's a long stretch between now and the next board meeting, which would be November 14th. I expect, we'll be, we actually will be, we'll be getting something back from the Methodist Church owners and then we would have them come, maybe get a little presentation and we go into closed session. And then we'll, we'll talk to Brian about his record management system at this point and maybe, and maybe a budget update if, if possible, so.
So it should be a quick four-hour meeting?
Quick, yes.
Will we have a personnel meeting that night too or not?
Just a board meeting.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Mike.
Does that work for everybody?
That's fine for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Five o'clock.
Yep, five o'clock. Yep, thank you.
You'll have to make your own dinner. Item three, a culvert replacement. Jeff, you wanna address that, please?
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna, the contractor is scheduled to start on the culvert replacement at Bethel Greenacre Park under South Bur oak. That's gonna require a roadway closing, we estimate approximately three days. And so South Bur oak will be closed from Walnut Street up to Butternut Street and with alternate routes down Cedar Drive and Pine Way. And that'll be reopened and then they can, well, they'll have the culvert, new culvert in and then they'll be making the final roadway repairs and curb and gutter repairs as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Item four, trick or treat hours are from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st.
That's it. That's the report.
That's the report? Item seven, communications and miscellaneous business. We have, first item is discussion and possible action regarding the North Bur Oak Culvert. Jeff?
Different culvert, yes. This is actually the culvert under, at North Bur Oak, just north of Jefferson Street. As you know, we're doing the roadway project there in 2018, or 2017. And what we've actually come to the conclusion is, the project of that, of that project's kinda gained in scope a little bit because we need to actually increase the size of that culvert to allow us to raise the roadway up a little bit. Our goal is to, we wanna raise the roadway up so that even during, say, a 25-year flood event, we will not have any water coming over the top of the roadway. And in order to be able to do that, we're taking capacity out of that cross-section, so we have to increase the size of our culvert. In order to do that, we need to verify that, everything with a wetland study. So that's what we have in front of us here today. And this is, is under the, we're having this under borrowing, I believe.
That, or we may just take it out, we may just take it out of Fund 405 because it's such a small amount. We, we have the money to do this.
What's Fund 405?
The street improvements.
Street improvements, okay. All right. We have a recommended motion before us to approve and accept proposal from Eco Resource Consulting in the amount of $3,000 for wetline delineation and report at North Bur Oak Avenue as outlined in the August 25th, 2016 proposal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Should we take a beat and let Candy catch up?
Which one are we on?
We're on 7B.
All right. Thank you.
Did you get the motion by Boudreau, second by Grenier?
No, I did.
5-0.
Are we ready? Sounds like it. Item 7B, discussion and action regarding approval of the revised three-year repayment agreement and five-year repayment agreement.
So I had a chance to review this document and it looks pretty straightforward, so I'm comfortable making the motion to approve the revised agreements, increasing the repayment amounts to $7,500 for three-year repayment and $9,500 for five-year repayment, repayment. I'm sorry.
Seventy-five for three and 95 for five.
Yeah, he passed the word in the proposed motion replacement, not repayment.
Repayment, yeah. Should be repayment.
So, but my motion is to repay.
Yep.
That's my typo.
And is that okay with the second?
I don't know that we had one.
Yeah, there was a second.
Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Basically, this deals with the...
Yeah, we hired a new officer and we're trying to discourage him from leaving within their, within the three years or five years, five years that they have gone to the academy.
And those are the estimated costs of training. So in other words, if somebody...
Trying to recoup our costs.
Right. If somebody, an officer starts here and leaves between three and five years, they're gonna have to pay back their training costs. That's what this really accomplishes.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we've got, didn't we get the review? I've, second time I've brought this up, review of building. No wonder it's deja vu.
Well, let's do it again.
Let's do it again. Review of building impact, connection fees and permits. I was like, man, didn't we just do this? No, I asked for it and then I was way ahead of everybody.
He was way ahead.
Jerry's way, he's trying to get out of here.
Yeah.
He was supposed to be doing four.
It's only three or four items ahead. Anyone have any comments or questions on, on the report that Lisa put in the packet? Lisa, do you have any discussion on that?
Just to make note that the single family will be down in 16, 16 compared to 15.
We're 14 off right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Single family.
Thanks for the report, Lisa. We'll move on to item D. This is a FYI item. Last week, we had Scott Zeitler from Holstein Kitchen here regarding his alcohol management policy. And Chief Yule at that time asked for a copy of the, the policy and just, and informing everybody that Scott and the chief met and the chief has approved his plan. We'll move on to item eight, which is, first item was planning, but we've done that. Item nine is minutes, not requiring action, so oblige and not take action. Ten is unfinished business, of which we have none. Eleven is new business and we have to approve pending new operator licenses, which have already been approved by the police department. The Chocolate Caper and Wendy Fourdrain, Headquarters and Whitney Theo.
Some more.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Further any discussion at all on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we've got item 12, some future agenda items listed there. And so we'll meet back here for the next meeting of the village board on the 24th at 5:00 p.m. Correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for a short recess before we move into the budget section of tonight. We'll meet back here in five minutes. We'll meet back here in five minutes. Good evening, everyone, we're back with the budget section of the October 17th board meeting. And this will be the final budget meeting. And at the end of this meeting, we will approve the budget, hopefully. So, we'll move right into it, Mike?
Yep, so I'm gonna have you turn to this, this is the Excel spreadsheet that was in your plastic folder. And you can tell on the agenda that we, we have received some bad news again, two years in a row about highway aids. And it's a reflection on a number of things, that there's a complicated formula that I'm gonna have Lisa explain. Just kidding, just kidding. That, I mean, it's, you know, they take the six-year average, three-year average costs, and we did have one, was it 2012 that was pretty low?
Twenty twelve was really low.
So, we think that's what's sort of hurting us, but also hurting us is that there's not as much state funding for this. That's obviously been in the paper a lot. And so, we were working in the assumption, because we took such a big hit of $41,000 from 15 to 16, that we thought, oh, for sure, we're gonna go up. I mean, we just, you know, we never lost that kind of money to us, and well, we were wrong. It went down, another, went down to 373. And as we noted on the agenda, we've lost almost $90,000 in highway aid in the last two years, which is pretty unprecedented. And so even though we got a little tick, or uptick on the share revenue, not even close to how much we've lost the last two years in highway aid. So, on this sheet, we, what was a $60 increase for a home value last year at 243, which has increased into $257,000. That now has gone up to $64. The second example is if your house was assessed 220, and now the value this year is 225, your taxes would go up about $17. And the last example is your house is valued at 362, went up to 383, your taxes would go up about $100. We still, we still do not have the final assessed value. And so I can say with some confidence that by the time you see the budget come to the public hearing on November 21st, that the $64 number will be different. I have been trying with Lisa's help, trying to get that under $60, and so that still is my goal. My goal is when I present the budget in November, I want to get it under $60 for an average house value. And if I can't, I can't, and I'll, I'll show you what it would take to do that at that point. But I just think it'd be, I think it'd be helpful for our village taxpayers to try to get under $60 for our average value, so. Right now, that would be a cut of, of twenty, about $25,000, if I remember from Friday, yeah, pretty close. Yeah, so there's a couple of things we still have hanging out there. And actually, it could make it even worse. While we're delaying the public hearing, is that the open enrollment on health insurance doesn't close until the 11th.
11th or 12th?
12th. Which means if somebody takes family health insurance that's not taking it now, that's like an $18,000 hit on the budget, so. So we're actually hoping that it goes the other way, but probably not likely. We actually don't get that many changes, I mean, per year, you know? So anyway, so that, we're gonna try to shoot for that, but I'm probably gonna ask the board at the end of the meeting to adopt the budget as presented. And again, this is only the preliminary budget, you know, we gotta schedule the hearing and then there'll be some things, there'll be some changes before we adopt it on the 21st.
Is there a specific place where the state highway aids will go in the budget, or any aspect of the-
It goes in the general fund.
General fund?
Yeah. And so, if we were really a community that had lots of money, I think what Lisa and I would do is we'd take highway aids, share revenue and expenditure restraint, and put that into capital. And so if it went up or down every year, it wouldn't hit us, but we can't afford to do that, you know? And so we're, unfortunately, we're dependent on that money going into the general fund to cover operations, help cover operations.
Any questions for Mike regarding his overview and the preliminary budget that he just presented? Are we all okay with his goal of trying to get under 60?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And that would take the, the calculation down even further.
For, yeah, if your house is gonna go $5,000, you'd be, I think it was like a $14 increase or something like that, so.
Yep, and then the-
And then, yeah, then you would drop the, the third example under $100, right?
It would go under $100 for home value of $362,000.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
We'll move on to item 14.
So, so this is actually now in your, in your budget book, if you would turn to page 14, please. I'm sorry, page 26, excuse me. And it's at the bottom of the page, this is the, this is the money the village provides for the Chamber of Commerce for their, all the, all the help that Judy does on economic development with us, the fireworks and then the community guide. And then I noted that in 16, if you're wondering what that, $77,000, that, that's the Brad Willie grant that we're giving him for the business part.
That's the value of Phil that's being given to him to help stabilize, is that right?
Um, that was, that was the amount the board decided to give him after two or three discussions with him, Doug.
It's a cash grant.
It's a cash grant, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was something else.
So can you remind me procedurally, are we making a motion and voting on each of these individually?
I think, I think what I would do is I would vote on 14, but then when you get to water and sewer, you could probably approve those together.
Okay, so the motion under item 14 is approve $3,500 for the chamber economic development, $3,000 for chamber fireworks and $1,500 for the community guide.
Right.
And 2016?
That, that, 2016, that's just a no. I just saw somebody wondering what that was about.
All right. So that is the motion, if someone would care to make it, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Jeanie and Jeff.
I think right now also it might be an opportune time, I think there's, sometimes there's some misconception in the community that somehow the village funds the Chamber of Commerce. And so, just, we're on TV, Judy probably appreciate this, we do not fund the Chamber of Commerce.
No.
Chamber of Commerce funds the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce pays Judy, correct, the director? And we help with, provide space for the offices at no charge.
Correct.
And then we also help with some economic developments.
So when the chamber was not here, we, we were like any other business, we paid an annual fee, but in, in place of that, the chamber gets free rent. And I think the range has worked out great.
I, yeah, I think it has too, but people's always seen it for-
Yeah, I've heard that, yeah, I know. Thanks, Jeanie.
Judy, would you like to make any comments regarding this item?
I better write it.
Well, I think it would be a good idea.
I just wanna take this time to thank the board for the money that you give us. We do work hard with economic development, Mike and I are working. And this hotel, it's still not off the plate with the chamber. We are working very hard on it, we, I have some feelers out there, two or three, so we're hoping that works and we finally get the hotel. So, we're not giving up, it's not, you know, we're gonna make sure that it all happens. Also, I don't know if anybody noticed, the new spruce tree outside, but we have gotten that given to us by Winterland Nursery and I kinda got it all together there, and we, we'll use it for our Christmas. And we'll light the Christmas tree on December 2nd, so you're all invited. The fire, and we'll go back to the fireman's station, and we'll have hot chocolate and cookies, and maybe Santa will even come. So we'll do those kind of things also. Other things that we have done, Summer Fest went off really, really well, especially with the fireworks, it was a wonderful thing. The only thing I ask is can you approve the fireworks so we can have them, I need to sign the contract. Are they all approved?
All the motion is first.
That was in the budget.
Right.
But do you have to amend the ordinance?
Yeah, you have to amend the amendment for, so that I can have fireworks. Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll plug Matt, Matt, that's in Matt's corner right now.
Okay, so if we can get that, because I wanna thank you for the $3,000 for it, because it really will work well. And then the 1,500, we do the community guide, and we handed out 6,000 of those, we print 6,000, I only have 100 left. So, they are going very well, especially with the elections, I see quite a few people coming in and picking them up. So, I don't know if we're gonna have enough for the whole day, but we'll put them out there and see who takes, and, you know, when they're gone, they're gone. And that's a good problem to have, so, we want them out with the community. We got a good new website this year, if anybody's seen the chamber's new website. More advertising for our businesses, more outreach for anybody who wants to see what Oregon's all about. So I invite you all to go out and look at that too. So, we are moving forward, we're having a good time, and we're working well with the, with the village, we work well with the school district. So, we'll make Oregon grow, and hopefully we can get some more businesses in town to relieve some of the taxes. So that's what I hope to do. So thank you, any questions?
No questions, but once again, thank you for the efforts of the chamber.
Thank you.
Regarding our community.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further comments from the board or staff on this motion? Again, the motion is to approve $3,500 for the chamber economic development, 3,000 for the chamber fireworks, and $1,500 for the community guide. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item 15.
So now, can you go back to your packet for, for tonight on these colored pages?
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the water and sewer budget. And as we, we note that the village's water and sewer utility is currently classified as a Class C utility by the Public Service Commission, PSC. However, now with over 4,000 reported customers, the utility will be designated as a Class AB utility beginning in 2018. And I included a letter that Lisa received from the Public Service Commission, that's just a heads up to the board, anything else you wanna say on that, Lisa?
No, I've never been through a reclass before, and I don't think Jeff has either, but we'll have to work together to figure this out.
It'll be a learning process, but this is really just new criteria for tracking your system. Looks like there's a depreciation or a kind of a capital improvement planned in there that allows us to track our assets a little more closer. It's just as we get to be a larger system, they wanna make sure that we're taking that extra caution and-
Reporting.
But you're right, it'll be a learning process.
Are the assets, what are the assets, Jeff?
Assets?
Yeah.
Oh, everything, our, our water tanks, our, our underground distribution system, our pumps, our wells. Meters, you know, basically all of it, hydrants.
All the, all the equipment.
Means basically all the equipment we have. It's pretty extensive, actually. And that's why they say it could take up to four years. The, the good thing is, is we, we do have a lot of, we've already really implemented a very large portion of our system in GIS. And so, I think we're gonna have a little jump on that, you know, so we're not starting from ground zero. But we'll be learning as we go.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll call your attention to the water budget on 83A. It doesn't have a page number on it, I just gave it one. But those are the, I guess you call them capital items?
Yeah, those are capital items, yeah.
That are gonna be approved, hopefully approved for the 2017 water budget. And that list there totals up to 1.116, $500. So any questions on any part of the water budget?
I have a question on page 82. Just taking a look at the miscellaneous general expense category, which is the third category up on the bottom.
That, oh, you wanna know?
How we spent $339,000 the previous year?
No, I wasn't so concerned about that as noting that the budget for 16 was 12,000, it'll probably come in at 9, but the budget for 17 is 3.
That's because that's the water impact fees that we've had to pay back. And we've paid back all that we've had to, and hopefully we'll have all of its, all the impact fees spent, so we don't have to make any payouts next year.
Okay.
So if you wanna go, you wanna go back to, as Jerry labeled it, 83A? Thank you, Jerry.
I figured it needed a page number.
Thank you, I should've done that. If you go down to the, close to the bottom, it says engineering and drilling of well number six, I mean, we have, you know, this is the estimated number, $345,000. That's, that's to put the well in on the west side, which will be spending the impact fees.
Plus.
The bulk of them.
Yeah, plus, plus.
Plus, yeah, excuse me, plus. And so we don't have to refund them, and we, and we are gonna need a new well out there, so.
Is that the lot we bought recently?
Yeah, we just closed on it like maybe three weeks ago.
Up near Netherwood Street, or?
Yes, right near the Presbyterian Church.
Right near the, yeah.
Whose property did we buy that from?
The Lutheran Church.
The Lutheran Church?
Yes, Lutheran Church in Missouri, I think.
Was Lutheran Church Missouri Synod extension?
The one over on, L, no?
Well, it's actually owned by the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod.
Oh, okay.
Which is more of a national association out of St. Louis.
I know, somebody was just asking me the other day, and I knew it was a Roman church, I didn't know, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the water budget? Do you wanna approve these as we go, Mike, or wait till the end?
It's up to you.
Let's wait till the end.
I'll probably wanna do it.
Next we have the-
Sewer budget.
Sewer budget.
And then I'm gonna number the page 89A, like Jerry would, it's the last page in your packet. I think there, Jeff and I'd probably like to point out that at the top, there's the $80,000. That's the, the system we're, or, my mute.
Yeah, that's, that's our annual payment. Now, if you remember, we've been in a pilot study, and it was only been $19,000 a year for the last five years. This is our first year under the full adaptive management plan for $80,000. We're, we're in this for at least five years, until the next off-ramp cycle, and I don't see us not staying in it. But it does allow us to work with other communities, including as well as MMSD and other entities, in managing the phosphorus at other locations in the watershed, thereby preventing us from having to pursue a very, very costly wastewater treatment plant expansion. So, $80,000 is a lot of money, but 20 million or so
Yeah, I was saying.
Of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant is a lot more money. And that's just a number I pulled out of the air, that is not, but it's-
If you're gonna pull a number, though, 20 million is really good.
20 million's always a good place to start.
That's pretty dramatic.
Or you could just say like a billion, a trillion.
Billion, sure. Put quotes around it or something, but, yeah.
It's gazillion?
I know, when we went through the adaptive management municipal agreement this last year, I don't know if you remember, but our engineer came and presented kind of relative costs for staying in the adaptive management program versus doing a plant upgrade. And it was a very good deal for us to stay in the adaptive management program.
Any questions for Jeff on the, on the budget? Okay?
So Jerry, you wanna, yeah, you wanna approve the water and sewer together, please?
Sure, could I please have a motion to approve the 2017 water and sewer budget?
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. Keep on flushing.
Put that in the minutes, please, Candy.
Jeff, what do you use the flatbed trucks for? I forgot to ask that.
We use them for everything. We use those for, they carry soil, they carry rock, they carry trees, they carry our equipment. We use them literally every single day. We use them for lawn mowing, we use them up in the cemetery, so they're, they're, they're used so much that if you'll see them, our, we can tell our flatbed trucks, 'cause they kinda do this in the center, that's how much they've been used and everything, so. And they are, they are in dire need of replacement.
Okay, how old are the current ones?
It was 94 and-
Right on here.
I don't have that. Right in front of me here, I think I can dig it up though. I'll let you know, it's, I know one was 94 and the other one, I believe, was 2,000.
How will you dispose of those?
How many what?
How will you dispose of the-
Park them in your driveway and leave.
What address should we deliver them to? There, there will be some salvage value, we'll probably sell those either on, on the Wisconsin-
But you're gonna dispose of them?
That is the plan, yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have, we don't have the space, and honestly, we need to work with the new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So Jeff distracted me with his comment. So Brett Howard in Grineer, right?
Yes.
Which comment?
Which, Jeff?
Keep on flushing.
Keep on flushing.
That's going.
You're next, no, I'm sorry.
No, I'll distract myself. I'm quite adept at that. Move on now to the joint meeting with the Cable TV Committee. Could we please have the?
I'm not sure there's quorum.
There's no quorum, so it'll just be Kermit.
Yep.
Come on up, Kermit. I'll introduce Kermit Trasko while he moves to the mic. He's the, what is your position, you treasurer for the?
Secretary Treasurer.
Secretary Treasurer, okay. Welcome, Kermit.
Thank you, and it's good to be at the Village Board Meeting again. We were here with our hat in our hands not too long ago, asking for some new equipment. The board came through on that, and we did get an additional grant for new equipment. All of that new equipment has been ordered and delivered and paid for, so it's very good that we're able to move on. Provided some information along with the budget material that we submitted, and it's a program report that really hasn't changed much over the years. Some of the new methods of doing things have changed, but otherwise, we're pretty much on mark. And what I would like to do is draw your attention to the last paragraph of our program report. And down on the bottom of that page, "OCA Media would like to thank the Oregon Village Board for its continuing support of local cable access in the Village of Oregon. With our recently acquired professional video equipment made possible by that additional grant from the village, we begin a new journey throughout the Oregon community and beyond. In addition, OCA Media will market its services as a competitively priced video production house. Our services will expand to include production of marketing, training, and web-based videos for businesses in Oregon and throughout Dane County. While we will continue serving charter subscribers by covering village and school activities, there are new opportunities for innovative ways to better serve our community. The way content is being distributed and consumed is rapidly changing. It's with this in mind, our team of professionals will continue to advance OCA Media to become a first-class professional video service in the Village of Oregon." And you have the budget that was proposed, and with that, are there any questions that you might have?
Kermit, are there any new services that you want to emphasize for the viewing audience?
I don't think they're really new, because we've been doing them along at a sort of a lesser level. We've done videos for Stoughton Hospital for several years, videos that they've put on their website and use to promote their services. We've videotaped training programs for them that they continue to show to their staff. And it's those types of activities that we're looking to expand into other businesses in and around the Oregon area. In addition, we've pretty much done away with videotapes and gone to digital media. Our broadcast facility is digital, no longer using DVDs or tapes to broadcast. Our cameras are digital. Instead of filming or recording on a videotape and then downloading that on a machine, which is real time, so if we have a two-hour program, it would take two hours to download that videotape into our machinery. Now, it's recorded onto an SD card. You take the SD card out of the camera, put it in our computer, download the digital file, and start editing. It does take a little while to download that, but not near as long as it did to download a videotape. And also, in our broadcasting, instead of just broadcasting over the Charter network system, we broadcast over the internet. Like our football game Friday night, or the program tonight, it's on Charter Cable, but it's also on the internet. So, you don't have to be an Oregon subscriber to Charter in order to see this program. You can log into the computer, ocamedia.com, and go down and find Live Broadcast, click on that, follow through, and you'll see it live on the internet. So, you could be around the world watching this program tonight. Any other questions?
Do you compete in any markets with private businesses?
Private, we would be doing the same thing, so I suppose that would be competition that, you know, for instance, Stoughton Hospital, I believe it's Channel forty-seven, that if you see a Stoughton Hospital commercial on television, that's done by a private company. So, in essence, yes, we would be in competition for that type of service. We haven't broken far into that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, before you make the motion to approve this, I want to have Lisa kind of give an update on the numbers. We caught a couple errors on the sheets.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep, sorry, yep.
Okay. So, on page thirty-three, which is the Cable TV Franchise Fund, I'm having issues with my software, our accounting software yet. And I've had a, I put a ticket in to resolve it, but I haven't heard back from them yet. I'm having issues getting the Department Head column filled in. The numbers you see there are incorrect in both the Department Head column and the Administrative column. If you look in the Department Head column, the projected, that's what, that would be the budget that OCA Media gave to us. So, what they're requesting, according to their budget from us, is the hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That would take the place of the number that says a hundred and thirty thousand, three seventy-five. So, that's what that...
Operating, under operating supplies.
Under operating supplies. It's about, not quite halfway down on the sheet. So, I can't get, and then the first number, the franchise fees number, that's also, that would also need to be changed to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three seventy-five. So then, when Mike and I were going through the budget, the franchise fee column should read the hundred and seventeen, which it does, that number's correct. But then, the operating supplies number, that should be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That would be the administrative proposal for the budget.
The proposal for?
That would be Mike's.
Yeah, so I'm going to read the note that's on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
So, while I was requesting a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five in cable fees in 2017, that's the number that Lisa just, and I'm recommending that we stay with the hundred and twelve, and then the village provides the additional fees after the Cable TV audit is completed.
So, you're adjusting the anticipated revenue for seventeen?
Right, because, right, because at this point, they're, what they're requesting would actually exceed then what we're going to receive next year. And so, I think before we do something like that, we should finish the audit first, and then come back and invite Kermit and everybody back to talk about a number of things, hopefully, you know, mid-year.
And again, the audit is a pretty basic.
Standard thing.
Acknowledgement, I mean, every department in the village has an audit. I think Cable TV, I'm not sure you've ever had one, have you?
Not since I've been on board.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's time to do that, and anything else, Mike?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Kermit, I got a couple of questions that shouldn't be too bad. Underwriting, can you define that for me?
Sure.
It's a revenue item.
If you watch public television, they'll say, "This program tonight is underwritten by such and such advertiser." It could be advertising, but in the nonprofit world, they kind of like the underwriting.
So, it's a sponsor?
A sponsor.
Okay, got it. The other question I have is in the 2017 proposed budget. And I'm not complaining, but suddenly, health insurance is gone. And is that correct?
Yes.
It is?
We're no longer providing health insurance for any of our employees.
Okay, I'm just checking to make sure that wasn't an omission. And the other question I have is salaries has shown an increase in... And it was noticeable, trying to zero in on it here. Yeah. Budget in fifteen was eighty thousand dollars, and the salary request for seventeen is one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars.
That was based on the full anticipation of receiving the full budget. If we are at the hundred and twelve thousand, obviously, that'll have to be adjusted.
Okay, all right. So, that number will have to change if?
Based on what is approved tonight.
All right. Anyone else have any further questions?
I just have one more question, too. As I was looking through your, the sheets that you provided for us, you have, I'm a little confused about the one that says a profit and loss for January through December of 2015, and then again, in the January through September of 2016. On the 2015 profit and loss budget, you show FICA taxes being budgeted at sixty-one hundred dollars, but then nothing paid out.
Yep.
I guess I don't understand.
When it's paid out, we do budget because we, the organization has charged the FICA in addition to what's deducted from the employees.
Right.
And then, when it's paid out, it's actually paid out through the QuickBooks, it's paid out under the salary section of it.
Okay, so it's, so...
So, the FICA is included in the salary expense.
So, it's part of the payroll, salaries includes all the benefits now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from staff or the board? Do we want to approve this?
If you want, sure.
With the, with the proposed change, or were there just the one change, right?
Well, I, it's, what Lisa went through is consistent with the notes is on the agenda, so I would say approve it with the change.
Okay. Okay, could I please have a motion to approve the 2017 Cable TV budget with the proposed change? Doug, some move. Doug made that motion, and is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeannie. I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So, Mike, when you say the proposed change, are you just simply saying that we propose a budget of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah, but Jerry's just making a point that on the budget sheet, it wasn't accurate, so the change that Lisa talked about is consistent with the...
Page thirty-three changes that Lisa made because of the system?
Yep.
Got it.
Yep.
Not cooperating.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kermit.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kermit.
Item twenty, Senior Center Budget. Allison.
Jerry, can I just say something before we, Allison jumps in, please?
If it's okay with Allison.
It's okay, Allison?
Yeah.
Thank you, Allison. I included some additional material in your folder, plastic folder, and I know that board members have been, I'll just read it, I guess, I put it in the packet, I just said, "I know board members have been asked about the village's support for the senior center." You should know that from 2013 to 2017, the village's support for the center will have increased eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the time period of 2015 to 2017, fifty-six thousand dollars, so. And that's a reflection of enacting the three-year phase-in that we did when we bought the My Senior Center software, and also, obviously, the village helping to cover the departure of the Village of Brooklyn from the center. But I know I've heard that, and I just think that, I think the board, I want board members to have that, when somebody would approach you and say, "The board and the village is not supporting the center, it's over a hundred thousand dollars for you, it's gone up." And this is no reflection on Allison, this is just that, that's what's happened over there, so. That's one thing, I want you to make sure you knew that.
And that, you're just, the cost of the roof, the dishwasher, the water softener, boring steel door, and the HVAC, is that what you're...
Well, it's just, no, this is just when we...
That's additional.
We went to a user-based software, so now, we're calculating the use of the center, and we did a three-year implementation plan, so it was a reflection of that, and also the, you know, the Village of Brooklyn pulling up. My general point is that the village has been, I think, very supportive of the center, and even in these tight budget periods that we budgeted over a hundred thousand dollars extra, increased the center's budget from the village since 2013. Not trying to be dramatic, Bob, I just want the board to have that, if somebody would ever approach you.
No, it's good information to share with the public, as is the information, all the upgrades on the building that we've done.
And then, two other sheets, the board members that were at the joint meeting saw these, but I included them. It's the worksheet that Lisa does, and then the information that actually Allison sent after the meeting, which I forwarded to all the board. At that joint meeting, the other representatives at the meeting wanted to see what the Village of Brooklyn was, was, how much they were using this center, as well as the town of Dunn and others, and that's what this sheet shows.
Allison, do you have any comments?
Can I just make one more comment?
Go ahead.
And then, I'll let Allison talk. Last comment about money on the agenda, as a result of the Village of Brooklyn leaving the senior center, the village is covering approximately eighteen thousand of Brooklyn's share of the center. And overall, that the center's only, the budget's only increased in twenty-four thousand. I want people to know, the budget's going up twenty-four thousand, but most of that is because of us having to cover the Brooklyn's share of, okay. Now, I'm done, thank you.
So, the twenty-four thousand dollar increase in the budget?
Eighteen of that approximately is helping to cover Brooklyn's departure.
And again, they were able to do that because there's really no recourse. We still have to serve the...
The village board made a commitment back in early part of the year that we were going to do our share to help cover Brooklyn's, I mean, I think everyone thought they were going to leave, and so, this, the working group that we have at the center, we've been working towards, you know, them leaving. We had to do that, we had to be realistic. And if they decided not to leave, that'd have been great, but as it turned out, Pat came to the meeting, the village president from Brooklyn, and said, "They are leaving," so it was good that we were actually working on that.
And again, the reason they can do this is because we receive county and federal funding through, for the senior center, right, Allison?
Well, federal in a roundabout way, because the meal site is older American Act, which is federal money.
Right, so we can't...
We physically receive it from the county.
So, we can't exclude anybody.
No, of course not.
Yeah, so, in other words...
And the majority of the folks that do move into the center are from the village, and that's what Mike was relating to, as far as the formula.
Mm-hmm.
We can see that now, just by people swiping in their cards.
Right.
It's, right, Allison, it's more common that seniors are going to move into a village or city than move from a village or city out into rural areas. So, our population use of the center is just going to continue to grow, probably dramatically over the next five to ten years.
And that'll drive a lot of other numbers in the village, that'll drive occupancy rates and rental units, it'll drive...
Everything.
Income into the stores, into the restaurants.
I think, you know, I think the whole discussion of what we do with the new senior center, and are we going to also provide senior housing as part of that project, that will be, you know, it will play into that as well, so.
Good points.
Can you, looking at page twenty-one, which is the start of the senior center budget, and then continuing on to page twenty-two, can you show me where that twenty thousand dollars of... can you show me where that twenty thousand dollars of increase is?
It's probably easier to sh...
It's, you're not gonna... Yeah, you're not going to really see it in the budget sheets. It's, it's going to be on the extra handout that was in your, that's where it shows. Because the other sheet, the other page of the sheet is where the calculation's actually done, and that's based on the usage of who comes into the senior center that we get from the My Senior Center software. So that, so the budget, that's, the budget worksheets includes everybody's part of the expense.
That's where you might see the six thousand dollar variance?
Right.
But the eighteen would only really show up here, and it would blend into the page twenty-one and twenty-two?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
That's why I was trying to make the point that I don't want people to think that Allison's budget's going up twenty-four thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, the center's, in a way, it is, but the true, true budget's only going up six thousand dollars. The balance, or the majority of it is that we're having to cover Brooklyn's...
The revenue went down.
There you go.
The Brooklyn revenue went away.
Right.
That's what happened. Now should Allison say something?
I am done. Thank you.
Allison, we're finally here for your moment.
Well, I suppose down the list with meal site outreach, which is case management, the Adult Day program, the building, senior center itself. I'll start with the meal site. Everything's pretty cut and dry. The difference there is the extra line item for contractual catered meals is seventy-one oh seven, and that reflects the money coming in that Dane County will cover for My Meal My Way at Ziggy's.
Would you want to give a little more information on that?
It's a pilot program that we're, we mirrored three other programs in Dane County that actually started two years ago. There's one in Manona, one in Mount Horv, and one in DeForest at various restaurants. It helps generate more interest in the congregate meal site where people actually come to the center to eat. Historically, we've had a very low turnout on Thursdays, so we chose that day after Dane County allowed us to pursue this idea of partnering with a restaurant in town. So we've gone from four people given Thursday eating lunch. Now, mind you, that has nothing to do with home delivered. You still have thirty home-delivered folks. But gone from four people up to almost forty. When you came to the open house, October sixth, we had forty diners. Last Thursday, we had thirty-nine diners. So the word is spreading, and everyone's very happy with the program. Donations are up, everything looks good.
Is that, it's a four-dollar donation, right?
It's anonymous.
Anonymous, okay.
And it's what people feel they can afford to pay. Some people are paying five, some are paying ten, some are paying two.
Okay.
But we're average, averaging about four dollars and twenty-five cents, which is way above Dane County averages.
And that's, again, that's a grant from the county, correct?
Correct.
Yep. That will happen at Ziggy's now, every Thursday?
Every Thursday, age sixty-plus.
Okay.
If people come in with a grandchild or something, someone younger, they have to pay the full price off the menu.
Okay.
So people age sixty and up.
The...
Take one of the eight choices.
And that will go through 2017?
Yes.
Okay.
And beyond.
Okay.
The money is just, I know at one time we were, Lisa and I kind of wondered, is that money going to last? And the county will subsidize more money if it comes to that. In fact, before I leave, I have to have you sign a form.
Okay.
To...
It's not a check, is it?
No.
Okay.
It's a Dane County form to increase the funding for this year for thirty-one hundred dollars to cover the costs of Ziggy's. So it's a good program.
I, no, I went the first week, and it's very, very good. It's a lot of food for, a lot of very good food for not very much money, so.
Yeah, it's great, and we're very happy that we were chosen to do this.
Okay, I kind of derailed your budget overview, so...
Oh. Really, that's the only major change in the meal site segment. And Lisa, pipe in if I'm missing something here. Same with outreach case management, that looks pretty standard. Adult Day program, again, that looks pretty standard, no major changes there. It's probably the easiest budget year to be working on.
That's why I did all the talking.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the only budget Mike did all, most of the overview.
And then the senior center itself, covering salaries in the senior center building, again. Not a lot of changes. We tried to keep it pretty flat.
Right. Well, I want to thank you, and please thank your staff, for all the work you folks do over there with our seniors. I know you do an awful lot with not very many resources, so, again, thank you. I forgot, did any of the other board members have any questions for Allison?
I did.
Go ahead, Doug.
Allison, in your narrative, Organize Senior Center 2017, you have a list of 2017 goals.
Yes.
I noticed you had one that says pursue new avenues of revenue for the senior center. Did you have some in mind, or...
Uh, no, I just want to pursue. No, I just think we need to look at other ways to enhance our budget. Whether it be funding from additional fundraisers, from council money, from other municipalities, from a membership fee, whatever it might be. There's all kinds of ideas we've tossed around. It's just ways to keep things afloat, you know? In case another municipality...
Yeah.
Is not a part of our future.
Speaking of that, are you hearing much from the seniors regarding Brooklyn's withdrawal of funding?
I've had some calls about people thinking they can't come in the senior center anymore from Brooklyn.
That's sad.
And I've reassured them they can, that there's going to be changes, they'll see, but it, it's not... We're going to try to have a smooth transition for them. And so far, I haven't heard anything back from the village as to what they're hoping to donate towards us.
Well, I think the fact we're hearing nothing speaks volumes, so. You're still compiling the data, though?
Yeah, absolutely, always.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Are we ready for, to approve the budget, Mike?
Yep, please.
Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the senior senate budget as presented.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chief, you're up.
Thanks, Allison. Bring us home, chief.
Page fourteen.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Glenn, there's no money left at the end here, sorry.
There's not the last?
Sorry.
We'll have to go back to the joint, or to the commission and tell them we have the money from the village, huh? I believe Mike has already passed along the information to you from the joint board meeting that we had with all the municipalities from a couple of weeks ago. And I think you can see that the budget that the Fire EMS district is proposing is going to save you guys a little money here in the village, around nine thousand dollars, if I'm right, Lisa. The number that I believe that I'm pushing here or looking at is like around about nine thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars in some sense. Basically, again, I'm the newcomer to the Fire EMS district here, looking at the numbers and stuff that former chief Malark put together. I don't think there's anything that we should be concerned of. I think it's something that we can live in those means. Again, this is a target budget. There's a lot of moving targets for this Fire EMS district here, basically, full-time, paid-on-call and paid-on-premise folks, and how we implement those folks with our operations. Chief Malark took a few dollars out of the training funding, basically, but if you look at the training funding and how training works with the two percent dues coming back with fire insurances through the local municipalities, that kind of make up the difference. So I think it's something that we can all work with and make sure that we hold at that target numbers for the upcoming year.
Mike, you have any comments?
No, I have nothing to say.
Lisa?
Nothing.
Board, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say I think Chief's doing an absolutely amazing job. He just jumped in with both feet a couple of months ago and picked up where Chief Jack left off, and we've just been very blessed and fortunate to have you here in the village, so thank you.
I thank you, Jeff. I come from a municipal fire department, of course, and used to municipal life. The district is a little different, you know, say, way of business, but I'm learning it and figuring it all out. But I'm very glad to be here and looking forward to the future.
Good to have you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jeff. Chief, I was at a meeting recently, and the subject came up of tires for the fire trucks.
Right.
And I believe Belville just had to replace all the tires on all their trucks because they were old. They were, I guess, if they get older than ten years old, you have to replace them, is that correct?
Well, there's some NFPA rules and regulations that are out there, and some fire departments abide by them, and some of them kind of go on and look at different means of DOT regulations. But there's a lot of places that replace tires at about ten or twelve-year point. One of those kind of things. Some municipalities will have truck vendors come in, look at, look at them, grade the sidewalls and things of that nature. But, you know, anytime you start driving around, the municipalities at a high rate of speed with forty-some thousand pounds of equipment and gear on there, it's one of those things that you want to make sure your tires are taken care of and that kind of stuff. So those are some things that we'll be addressing with our apparatus and our fleet in the days and weeks ahead.
But that's why, Jerry, that's why every vehicle has at least four tires, just in case.
Some cases, there's more than four, Jeff.
Sometimes they have more than four, so...
Belville had to replace all their tires, and they were like ten thousand dollars a pop.
Yeah, it would come underneath state bid, but they're not, they're not, they're not cheap.
They, they're just trying to figure out what to do with it. I think they had to borrow to replace their tires, so. We're not in a situation where that could happen here, are we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, and one thing that I will say, and this predates Chief Glenn and talks to the guidance of Phil and Chief Dale and the work that's been done over the past few years, is that the fire department has a very healthy fund balance at this point because of a lot of hard work and a lot of belt tightening, all the firefighters and EMS personnel tightening their belts, watching their expenses.
Yep.
So we have well in excess of the recommended thirty percent.
Thirty percent of the operating budget for the district, yeah.
Yep.
In reserve.
And that number, again, is Lisa's, like, right around...
I think it's like five hundred.
I was going to say like four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-some thousand.
Quick, Lisa, come on, what is it?
Sure.
Something in that neighborhood. Don't hold us right to the exact number, but...
Jeff, when you say Phil, do you mean Phil Van Campen?
Yeah, Phil Van Campen, I don't know enough about the Fire Commission, having only been on it for three years myself, but certainly came into it with, when Phil Van Campen was chair, and along the way, I've learned a lot from Phil and his oversight of the commission, I think Mike could probably speak to it.
Absolutely.
Has been a real blessing to the joint district.
Yeah, he's been there through thick and thin, I know that.
Yeah. Extremely thin, from my understanding.
Phil was a key player back in 2011 with Delbesky and former trustee David Donovan that helped get the district through the crisis as well as all the employees over there, absolutely.
Okay.
Financial crisis, you mean, financial crisis.
Chief Glenn, do you have any further comments?
No, very good, I just appreciate being here, look, again, looking forward to working with you in the future.
Questions from the board or staff?
Nope.
I believe we're ready for a motion then to approve the village portion of the Fire EMS budget.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks again, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, we're ready for the big moment.
Yes, we are.
Big finale.
Big finale after probably, what, ten, eleven hours of budget review?
Maybe six.
Six? I like my number.
Your number is better, Jerry, or your magic.
It's more impressive, but I kind of like it, but anyway.
Maybe seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, I'll give you that.
Can I please have a motion to approve the 2017 preliminary budget and set the November twenty-first, 2016, as a public hearing date?
Sub move, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The budget is approved, and we'll have a public hearing again on November twenty-first.
Yep.
Okay, move on to item twenty-three. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sub move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your one.